I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:00. First, let me start by explaining why I'm sitting here. The mayor had a back problem that occurred yesterday and has had her in bed for the last couple of days. And we discussed putting a bed back here, but we decided that probably wouldn't be good enough, so here we are. So we will have the invocation by Mr. Ferguson and followed by the pledge from Chief Smith. We all stand if you wish.
Please bow your head if you're so inclined. Gracious God, as we begin our meeting this evening, we pause to remember all those who have been affected by the horrific storms and floods, and we ask you to continue to keep them safe and give them encouragement to rebuild their homes and their lives. We thank those from our community who went to help or stayed here and helped those affected who came our way. Gracious God, we give you thanks for the blessing of living in this beautiful part of your creation. Help us to honor it by being good stewards of that which you have entrusted to us. Guide our deliberations this evening and help us make decisions that are in the best interest of all the citizens of Kerrville. In your holy name, amen.
Will you join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess another reminder I'm supposed to make normally is if everyone makes sure their cellphones are off as we're being recorded. The first item is the announcements of community interest. Do we have any announcements?
Yes.
Thank you, councilman. I want to say welcome to everybody. Glad to see everybody here tonight. My name's Stuart Cunyess, and I'm the new public information officer here. And I understand this is a little bigger turnout than we usually have, so clearly I'm doing my job right. Everybody can see. Just have a few announcements before we began, and these are about upcoming events that we have going on. First one is Saturday, September 16th at 1:00 at the library. And this is the drive-in at the library event. It's for kids of all ages. You can stop by, and as you can see, you can make a cardboard car. And when that's over at 2:00, you're going to get to watch a movie called Lego Batman, which I'd like to see, actually. So I'm kind of envious of what they get to do there. Registration's still underway. The movie is free. It's open to everybody. Snacks will be provided, and families can also bring a cap drink. And for more information about this event, you can visit the city website, or you can call the library. This is one of the many events that Laura Bechtel and Daniel Brigati oversee at the library, and they do a great job, so be sure and say hi to them when you get a chance. Okay, our next event, this is in not this weekend, this coming weekend, but the following weekend, September 23rd and 24th. That's a Saturday and Sunday. This is the Kerrville Triathlon Festival. It's returning to town for the seventh straight year. And it's going to be at various locations around town, primarily Louis Hayes Park and Kerrville Shriner Park. Events include a sprint triathlon and the kids' fun run on Saturday, and a half and quarter distance triathlon on Sunday. Do we have any runners in here? Anybody who's participating? There's one down there. All right. You're going to be running a lot farther than I am that day, I can promise you. Registration is online at KerrvilleTri.com, or Friday from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the end of the hills. Now, there will be some road and lane closures during the triathlon. They'll be detailed on the city's website, but they should be brief. And I want to point out, I think it's important to note that since its inception in 2011, the triathlon has brought more than 6,000 people to Kerrville. Obviously, that translates into revenue for our area restaurants and businesses and hotels, so I think it's a great event, and I hope that we can continue to host it for many more years. All right, finally, and this is still a ways off, but the city is accepting applications for the annual holiday light parade. Obviously, last year's was cold. See some warm weather clothes there. Now, it's going to be Saturday, November 18th, approximately 16:00 p.m. in the evening. And if you're interested in participating, there's entry packets with parade rules and regulations that can be found on the city's website, or they can be picked up at the Parks and Recreation Office on Bandera Highway. The fee is $20 per entry, and all entry forms have to be submitted before Friday, November 4th. Again, another great event that we host every year, and a lot of fun. Mickey shows up, so I think this will be another terrific year for it. All right, thank you.
Anybody on the council have any announcements?
I have an announcement. Chief Knight set up a ride-along with me last Friday evening with one of his police officers. I really enjoyed it. It was very interesting. Got to learn how they operate. I did miss the TIBI game, which they did win, so that was exciting. We drove by and saw the score. But the officer I teamed up with was actually an officer that went to Houston to deliver supplies for the hurricane victims, and I just want to say I'm very proud that we have officers like him on our police force, and thank you, Chief Knight.
I have one announcement. It's not really an announcement, it's more of a, well, it's an apology. I'd like to personally apologize to the members of the public, the media, the city staff, county commissioner, and other members of EIC and KDC for my part in publicly posting a 7:30 a.m. joint meeting last week of EIC and KDC, which was publicized to be an open discussion regarding the economic development process in the city of Kerrville and Kirk County, as all of you, or a number of you here recall, only to have the open discussion shut down and moved to be taken up in a private meeting at some later time. I'm truly sorry for the inconvenience that was caused and for anybody that had to wake up at 7:30 to attend that, and that's it. So the next item is the visitor citizen forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers will be limited to the first 10 speakers, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. And we actually have one, I believe. Deborah, I can't say the last name.
Godier.
Okay, there you go.
I'm actually here tonight, I'm sorry, DeBora Godier, 1100 Bushwhack Road. I'm here tonight.
Speak in the microphone, please.
Okay, is that better?
You can bend it over and move it over to you.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Anyway, I'm here tonight in my role as marker chairman for the Carroll County Historical Commission. We've already had two historical markers dedicated this year. We have two more being dedicated on Saturday. Now, you should have all gotten, you all should have all gotten invitations. It's open to the public. We're going to be marking the depot where Rails is located and the Rails Event Hall, which is the vital lumberyard. And Rails will be catering afterwards, so you don't want to miss this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get your time, did I? 2:00.
All right. Thank you. So the next item is a recognition. The city would like to recognize Dale Meyer, the garage superintendent, who has been with the city for 40 years. Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you. So Dale, come on up, and I'd like to ask Yermo Arcia, who supervises Dale, and Sandra Yagura, who's our CFO, who used to supervise him for 34 years. It's taken me a while, and he used to be long tenured with the city of Kerrville, but it's such an honor to be able to be a part of the team that really has to create and teach knowledge and so dedicate it. I also want to recognize the guys that Dale works with. Could you guys stand up in the back? Let's give them a round of applause. They're here to, along as well as the rest of us, to recognize you, Dale, for your 40 years. And I understand that one of the things that you do that you enjoy the most is you work on that 1971 record, so keep it in good order. And if I haven't seen it, it's pretty impressive. It's a great condition, and he's very proud of it. So the certificate of recognition just is acknowledging Dale Meyer for his 40 years of outstanding service to the city of Kerrville. And let's go ahead and get a quick picture with everybody here. Okay, there it is. And then Sandra, do you want to make a few remarks?
Well, first of all, Dale has a lot of skills that goes unnoticed because we've had things that's broken in the past, and he's been able to do the MacGyver on them and get it out until we could get the parts. So he's very dependable. He has saved the city lots of money over the years, and he has a very good staff, and y'all should be very proud to have him.
And if you are, yeah, very proud. Let's give him a round of applause.
These items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member asks for separate consideration of an item. It is recommended that the city council approve the following items, which will grant the mayor or city manager the authority to take all actions necessary for each approval. Does anybody wish to have any item pulled off? No?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? The motion passes 4 to 0. So now we're on to item 5A, the EIC budget. The fiscal year 2018 budget for the city of Kerrville Texas Economic Improvement Corporation is before us to be, for approval, and we have a number of speakers. I believe the ones I have left are all on this topic. Yes, so we'll just go with the ones I have. John Hefner?
Would you like to, would you like to have a motion first?
Well, excuse me?
My mistake, yes, tell me.
Probably have a presentation from the staff first.
Presentation, there you go. That works.
Good evening, mayor and council, or mayor, pro temp and council. Just briefly going to overview the packet which is within your agenda. This was a approved budget from the EIC. They did approve that on Monday, August 21st of 2017. This budget allocates just a little over, just under 4.8 million for fiscal year 2018. The revenue projections for fiscal year 2018 are just under 3.5 million, which represents, contemplates a planned drawdown of reserves of just over 1.3 million. The fiscal year '27 Economic Development, Economic Improvement Corporation budget projects an unrestricted fund balance at the end of the year at 2.2 million. As with previous budgets, this does represent essentially an administrative category as well as three other categories: business development, quality of life, and public infrastructure. Different than last year's approved budget, the EIC did ask us to distribute the different debt categories from each that was previously within the administrative category into the other subsequent categories. So that is a little bit of a change from the way that you may have seen this presented in previous years. Within the administrative category for this year's 280,500, that does include a contribution to the Kerrville Economic Development Corporation as well as the administrative fees to the city. Category 1 Business Development, 500,000 for fiscal year 2018. That does contemplate the economic development set aside of 500,000. That economic development set aside is projected to be at 1.5 million at the end of fiscal year 2017. Category 2 Quality of Life, just a little over 2 million. That does include debt service payment for the River Trail and the Sports Complex projects. It also includes 750,000, which is the second of two allocations for upgrades to the tennis center. That does have a funding agreement already initiated between the council and the EIC for a total of 1.5 million. It does also include, within that quality of life category, 200,000 for downtown parking centers' streetscaping enhancements, currently projected at the end of fiscal year 2017, is 565,100 for that effort. So at the end of 2018, that total effort will have 765,100 allocated towards the downtown streetscape. Category 3 is public infrastructure. That, right now, entails 1.9 million and 50,000. It also contemplates a second allocation of 1.5 million towards the reuse distribution lines. Again, that does have a funding agreement obligation already approved by council and EIC. It also does include a net new debt service issuance for Legion Lift Station within the public infrastructure. That's 200,000 for fiscal year 18, and then 400,000 in future years. It also does include $250,000 allocation for workforce housing. That does have a capital project fund currently existing. With the addition of that 250,000, it will bring that total at the end of fiscal year 2017 to 600,000. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council?
Just an email we got today from Mike. Does the Legion Lift Station qualify?
Yes, sir. Happy to let the city attorney further elaborate on that, but yes, we do, as staff, feel that that is an inclusive public infrastructure project. Yes.
I'll move approval of the EIC budget.
Second. Any other comments from council? I believe there is. That would be me. The, in the, he left. Can I ask a question? In the, in the budget there, the, the EIC amount for, for KEDC is listed as 140, but it's actually budgeted for 180. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or I'm saying 140,000 instead? Okay.
Yes, within the budget that was approved by the EIC, it did have 140,000 with the option to potentially go up to 180,000 during the course of the year, subsequent to other actions of brought forth by the KEDC. So within the budget, it was approved at 180,000, because that's, we are in year three of a three-year agreement with KEDC that allocates 180,000 towards that effort.
And, okay, so basically, the amount that's being allocated is based on an up-to amount in the contract with KEDC and EIC, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And so the reason I'm bringing it up now is because I would actually like to see, we can't direct them specifically to do these things, but by approving this budget, we're approving that amount of up to 180, and it would be my goal that KEDC be fully funded, okay? And so bear with me for a second while I explain. KEDC's expense budget is roughly 255,000. They've gotten money from EIC. They're going to ask for money from the city. They're going to ask for money from the county. They're going to ask for money from KEPUB. That, that basically fully funds them. They also have a reserve of 107,000 projected in their, in KEDC's account. What I would prefer to see, because of all the discussion that's going on currently about the process, I would prefer to see, rather than have KEDC hold a reserve that's essentially pre-paid in, it's already, the stakeholders have already paid in, I'd prefer to see the reserves be used for funding this year, similar to how they did, I think it was three years ago, when they chose to essentially buy down or pay down their reserves. In doing that, the suggestion would be, in this budget, I'd prefer to see EIC make their budget be 140, leaving the other three stakeholders and the reserve to fill out the rest of that budget. So I guess that's pretty much all I'm saying, as far as, my suggestion would be to, I guess, not accept it as it is.
You're saying 140 rather than 180?
What they have in the budget right now is 180. It's budgeted for 180.
Yeah, so you're saying 140 rather than 180?
Correct. Because, and just to be clear, that's not underfunding KEDC.
No, understood.
Okay.
Wasn't that discussed at the last EIC meeting?
It was discussed, but as it was brought out, and he's pointing it out correctly, basically what was said was, we will, EIC will fund KEDC 140 at the beginning of the year with the option of coming back to EIC to ask for the other 40. As long as it stays in their budget as 180, then it doesn't come back to the city for approval. We are approving that full amount, 180, today if we approve the budget as is.
What, what is your purpose?
Purpose?
What's going to happen to the other 40,000 dollars that's better?
Okay, so because the city and the stakeholders have already paid in, the real question is, what's the purpose of KEDC? A fully funded operation, they have no real revenue, right? They are projecting a reserve of 107,000. So really, the question is, why not have the reserve be applied to this year's expenses, similar to what occurred, like I say, it was, I think it was three years ago, it might have been a little bit longer. So rather than have the 40,000 go to this, it should stay in EIC for economic development or such. It just seems like a silly thing to have a reserve going unused. It's been paid in. I mean, the only reason there's a reserve is because the stakeholders have paid in, right? And so that's, that's really what it gets down to. So like I say--
I suppose the only reason it, it would be used is then for something that was unanticipated.
Which, the reserve?
Yeah. Some, something came along--
You could, you could say that, but keep in mind that they're not a, they're a marketing--
Yep, that's right.
Okay, so, so they're essentially, something coming along out of, out of the blue is not likely. You can, you can, you can argue that a huge reserve might be useful for somebody to do economic development with, but that's not KEDC's function, that's EIC's function. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
They're the actual funding source, so--
Yeah, but, but isn't it, is it, or is it not true, that the first people in town, if, if someone was interested in bringing a business to town, the first people that they would see was KEDC?
Correct.
Okay. I could, I would hope there's somebody coming to town that would use that money.
But they aren't, they aren't the funding sources for the people coming to town. The first--
But they might need it for marketing to get them to stay, you know, stay in the game.
Okay, I'm, I don't--
Okay, we may disagree about it.
Yeah, that's, that's basically where we are. I'm not looking to convince you. That's, that's basically my, my reasoning behind it is--
Okay.
To fully fund them with the money they need, the money they've asked for, which is 255, that's their expense budget, and just direct them to actually utilize their reserves for that, as, as part of that. To add to it, the county actually, they didn't take action, but they had a discussion the other day considering the idea of letting some of this hash out, this, this process hash out before they actually presented funding. And the, the numbers that, if, if we have KEDC use their reserve, that would allow the county to do that without KEDC being short of their money. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it, it's, because the county will leave it in their budget, just like the city most likely would, but it doesn't mean they have to hand it over, and KEDC will, would have their full expense budget covered.
Yeah, but going back to my point, if, if somebody came to town and was interested in locating a significant business here, and they ask for some work to be done about something or another, you know, what's housing like? What's this or that or the other cost, and how much? And they, they probably have their own form they won't fill out, and--
Presumably, that's in KEDC's budget to do that type of work already. But I mean, that's not a surprise to them. They're expecting companies to do that.
No, they're expecting some of it. I'm, I'm hoping there's something that'll come along in addition to that which they expect. It's, it's 12 months, 13 months from now you got to run. The odds are probably that it's somewhere in between what you'd like and what I'd like is, I hope, what happens, because I think we need a greater growth rate in town to afford the things that a lot of people want.
Okay, and I would, I would agree with you. And what I'm doing is I'm actually tipping my hat to the expert that's running KEDC who asked for a budget of 253.
Yeah.
And we're going to fully fund that, so I'm just looking to do that. If he wanted 100,000 more, he would have budgeted that.
Does he, does he think it's a good idea to draw down his reserves instead?
I would assume not, or it would have been in his budget.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
But he doesn't--
And I'm thinking, he's the economic development professional, and I'm not--
Fair enough.
I don't think you are, George.
No, but I'm, I'm a different person, taking a different set of eyes, and if you would like me to go through the other part of this discussion now, we can, but I don't think it fits in here.
Do you have, you have other amendments to offer?
No, not amendments, but justification behind it. I think we'll wait till after the public comments before I do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to--
Basically, that's, that's our discussion, and so we've had a motion and a second, and we have public comments. So we'll, we'll take those now, I would assume, unless I'm missing the order, right? Okay. So back to the first person, if I'm saying it, or is it Hefner? John Hefner? Okay.
Make the highlights around here.
Excuse, yes, yeah.
Sign up for the triathlon.
There you go.
Try to be brief here, and hopefully I'm, I'm addressing this at the right point. I want to speak about a project I think might be part of the EIC budget, might be part of the city budget. Just by way of background, my name is John Hefner. I live at 3316 Arrowhead Drive, relatively new to Kerrville, and look at things with fresh eyes, to some extent. Have quite an interest in economic development and quality of life issues. About two, three months ago or so, I attended a city council meeting, and there was quite a presentation made by an architect on beautification of our parking garage right over here. And that seemed to make an awful lot of sense to me. Beautification of the parking garage and its landscaping seemed to be a, be a very cost-effective way to have a very big visual impact on our downtown. I suppose a case might be made to say, well, it's just a gray parking garage, and that's what they all look like. I think we owe ourselves better than that, because this one overlooks Peterson Plaza and the prettiest part of the downtown area, and we need a vibrant downtown. Every successful city needs restaurants and shopping and entertainment, and that's what we've got concentrated right here, and yet we've still got quite a few empty storefronts here. So I think anything that we can do to enhance the appearance of downtown is a good idea, and I would advocate that a very serious consideration be given to that project. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another speaker, Bill Blackburn?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. I'm Bill Blackburn and reside at 809 Blue Bell in Kerrville. I urge the council to continue to support the Kerr Economic Development Corporation and the city's partnership with this vital organization. Years ago, I was on the board of what was then the Kerr Economic Development Foundation, and over the years, I've stayed in touch with this organization through reading and through periodic visits with the executive directors. Why would a Baptist preacher be interested in the economic development of the area? First, I believe continued and wise economic development is vital for the health of Kerrville and the area, and crucial for the future of this community. But I have another interest. Over my 33 years here, I have worked with a lot of low-income people who are hampered by low wages. I have seen graduates of Christian Women's Job Corps and Christian Men's Job Corps excitedly graduate from those programs, only to find that the jobs available to them here are barely living wage. We need more good jobs, jobs that have some benefits, jobs like the KEDC has helped to bring here and to expand. When we see more of our citizens employed in solid and good work, able to support their families, and with more dollars in their purses and pockets to spend in our local businesses, economic development happens and multiplies. I believe the partnership between the city and the KEDC will continue to grow through solid communication and strategic cooperation, and that the flexibility and the broad support of the KEDC will serve this community well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Jack Pratt?
Good evening. My name's Jack Pratt, 105 Deerwood. First of all, the economic development-- First of all, the economic development used to be controlled by the good old boy network in this community, government, and they both failed. Prior to the formation of the KEDC, economic development was a complete failure in our community. KEDC is not an entity of the city, rather, an organization incorporated under the laws of the state of Texas, and it has its own diversified Board of Directors, officers, and employees. KEDC is funded by the city, the county, with representatives from each, KISD, Chamber of Commerce, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and EIC as well. It operates independently and free of complete government interference. The city of Kerrville's primary mission is to provide public safety and the delivery of services to its citizens. The last thing we need is a city employee taking the lead in recruiting new businesses into Kerrville. Government isn't known for effectively and efficiently streamlining processes. Kerrville Economic Improvement Corporation, known as EIC, through their board oversees the spending of our economic development sales tax dollars. The board consists of a diversified group of citizens who volunteer their time and serve our community. The board is consisted of business professionals who are connected to the entire community. The economic development has safety filters through KEDC, then EIC, who then makes recommendations to the city council for approval. These different layers are the checks and balances that reduce the wasteful use of tax dollars and saves taxpayer dollars. Eliminating the other taxing entities from being economic development partners is not in the best interest of Kerrville or her citizens. Past history indicates that the county would not want to contribute to the support of a city economic development employee or some of the other entities that are partners in this endeavor. Thus, it would cost the city more money. Economic development is a county-wide issue and shouldn't rest solely with the city. The majority of the EIC supports the current system that we have. The KEDC board supports the current system we have. The Chamber of Commerce supports the current system. The current system has been in place for several years and operates effectively and efficiently. The business decision-makers who are responsible for relocation of new development projects prefer to deal with non-government entities to reduce leaks about their intentions for expansions. It is important to them to keep such planning endeavors confidential and away from their competitors. Our current system is the most effective way to recruit new businesses. Let's don't break it, let's leave it alone.
Okay, excuse me, mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because you were talking about the KEDC/EIC city partnership. Is it your understanding that in that partnership, funds out of EIC would have been able to be used out in the county, outside the city limits?
No.
Okay, because that's exactly why the county feels left out.
Well, but-
And in fact, the EIC is allowed to spend that money outside. And so when we're looking at the system, we're trying to evaluate that full system.
I understand that, but I'll just give you my stance on that. The citizens of Kerrville are already under double taxation.
I understand.
Okay, they're taxed by the city, and they're also taxed by the county. And when you have a sales tax that comes in as a city sales tax, then the citizens of Kerrville want those taxes paid for their benefit, not outside the city limits.
I understand the logic behind it, just so you understand that that's the message that got sent to the county that made them feel left out of the system.
I understand that, but under the current system, the Kerrville Economic Development Corporation, along with EIC, there are lots of businesses that have potential to come into Kerrville if you utilize the eighty-eight acres out on Peterson Farm Road, as an example. That's, you know, that's almost in the county and in the city. And the city and county have a partnership on the airport, and that's really in proximity to the airport. So, you know, you help each other.
Let's clarify that question. Can EIC money be used outside the city limits?
Yes, it can.
Yes, it can?
Yes.
County would have to approve it.
Right.
But it can, right now, with no changes?
Absolutely.
It can.
And just so to be clear, so the county commissioner is here, just so we understand what we're saying, that's the way it's always been. I mean, it's definitely the way it is now, and the county doesn't have to feel, it doesn't mean EIC has to spend it, but they can. It's a possibility anyways.
Just wanted to get it straight.
So we have another speaker, Mr. Don Barnett.
Don Barnett, Three Antelope Trail. I'm a KEDC board member and have been for seven years. And I want to say that pretty much what's already been said here is that our commitment is to jobs, and that's been our commitment since the beginning. And we've been very fortunate to have some very professional people come here over these seven years who have taken us on the path to finding companies who want to come to Kerrville. It's a very competitive market, it takes a lot of effort. And each time you take a step towards competing in this market, somebody else steps in and takes it away from you. And we've looked at multiple ways and multiple discussions about how we can develop a strategy. And I think we took a positive step last week, George, in my opinion, in saying, let's form a discussion point where we can become stronger partners as opposed to some divisive partnership. So I think we would like for you to approve this budget. We've done what we need to do to modify it. To your recollection is how it was done. But we think that this is in the best benefit of Kerrville in the long term. And we're in this, the board that sits, that I sit with, is in this for the long term. Thank you.
And the next speaker, Brian O'Connor. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is.
Good evening, mayor pro temp, council. I'd like to hand out a little bit of an activity report just for council. And I apologize for catching you late with this. Because of the sensitive-
These are for these things.
I've got, I've got. Go ahead.
Well, here, I bet you're also-
Typically, because of the sensitive nature of the work that we do, confidentiality is paramount. If we don't have that in terms of working with businesses, looking at their financials, talking about their short-term, long-term plans, what their base wage rates may be and so forth, we don't have anything. And in fact, economic development will not happen. What I've done for you is give you a little bit of a historical perspective on what the KEDC has managed to accomplish. These are some of my predecessors, frankly, who were able to accomplish this work. But it also indicates what the city's return on investment was, the number of jobs created and so forth. And I would arguably say that the return is very good for you. I also want to let you know that we just don't do project-based development. The KEDC is actually working on cultivating an economic infrastructure so that we can do more and better projects as we move forward. And what I mean by that is we're looking at developing databases, you know, a property inventory that we currently don't have. We don't have any idea in terms of how much industrial space we have out there, what the age of it is, what the equality of it is, what the vacancy rate may be, what the absorption rate from one year to the next may be, where lease rates are going. That's the type of information that we need to be able to provide to site selectors and prospective businesses that look at our community. So that's part of the infrastructure that we're trying to build. Also, we didn't have a real estate platform. We're using ESRI data to be able to populate that property database so that people can begin to see what the median household income within a one, five, or fifteen-mile radius of a particular site that they're looking at. They can look at what the education of the population is. There's some other things that we're working on, such as technical trades. We're working with KISD, Alamo Colleges. I've been to Hutto, I've been down to San Antonio, I've been to Sugarland to look at some of the technical trades that they're beginning to develop within those communities so that we can come back and begin to look at the future of our workforce and get those people better prepared. This doesn't happen alone. I mean, I have a wonderful board that gives me a lot of guidance, a lot of direction. The age, the maturity, and frankly, the passion that these people bring to making sure that Kerrville is more competitive as we move forward is rather astounding. One of the other things is a grant database. We're missing a lot of grant opportunities within this community. The chamber and the KEDC are working collaboratively to establish this database so that chamber membership, as well as KEDC, you know, clients, can avail themselves of grant opportunities that may be out there. There's Department of Labor, Department of Agriculture, USDA, and so on. There's a lot of opportunities, but we don't have that information located within a central place. And then finally, are the projects that we're currently working on? You can see, it really kind of runs the gamut. And my apologies because I have eliminated detail on this only to be able to protect the interest of our clients. I hope you take all this into consideration as you make your decision. We do need the city's voice at the table, along with your support, so thank you.
Okay, since we have you up here, you know, and we need to get these, it's my fault, but we should have been talking, we're talking about the EIC budget, so, but in regards to KEDC, we talked about the reserve. That I'm suggesting that we ask KEDC to use that reserve to fund them, using it fully to fund them this year. What is the reserve being held for?
As we had addressed, I think, the last EIC meeting, the reserve is really, we're pushing the envelope on some things. I had brought to you a preliminary plan that we were going to do some spec buildings. That was the original intent of creating the reserve, that we would use those funds for that. As we went down that path, we found out there wasn't enough market data to be able to warrant us building spec buildings. So we entered into a public-private collaborative with a local developer and also an architect to create a built-to-suit plan. We anticipate that those reserves will end up being used for pre-construction activities. We may have to do more conceptual drawings, some engineering, some environmental work, and so forth. KEDC is going into new directions that we haven't before. And that's why those reserves are very critical.
All right, so when we're talking, two things about the spec thing. This is why it's important to this discussion. Correct me if I'm wrong, but in a sense, the downfall of KDF, and Mr. Barnett probably answered this better than anybody, I guess, had to do with that land that was essentially a speculative purchase attempting to get there. So speculation, sometimes good, sometimes not. The other is, as far as the concept of a spec building or even the architect drawing, would that not be better served as a project, if you will, of EIC directly? Is there a reason for it to be run out of reserves from KEDC rather than strictly from EIC funding?
Well, two things, just let me back up a little bit. First of all, the spec building plan was the original intent. That has now become a built-to-suit plan.
Okay.
It's not speculative at all. It's us working with a private developer and an architect to be able to come up with conceptual drawings, flexible building plans, show them on various building sites, and then go and aggressively market. So, and-
Yes, okay, and I'll-
And then, as those businesses came in, yes, we would have to begin to negotiate or start negotiations. Perhaps we would want to do some environmental investigation work, a title search, you know, environmental work and so forth. So having tools at our disposal, especially at the table with a client early on, is really imperative to get projects to move to the next level.
Okay, all right, thank you. The next speaker is, oh, go ahead.
Sure. How many employees does KEDC have?
Really, one and three-quarters.
Okay.
We have an administrative assistant who pulls really double duty, but she's only there thirty hours a week and does an immense job.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got a question. Brian, you and I talked last week, and you mentioned that you would be interested in looking into budget cuts and maybe a rent-free facility. Are you still interested in something like that? Can you do that?
I'm not sure what you're alluding to in terms of budget cuts. I'm always looking for cheaper rent and so forth. But actually, to tell you the truth, I think we have a wonderful relationship over at the Chamber of Commerce. I work with those people almost on a daily basis. Quite often, the chamber will be an initial point of contact, and they're always very good in terms of passing the baton, letting them know that KEDC is there. They're fully apprised in terms of the purpose that we serve, and they're able to tell prospective clients as they walk through the door what the mission of the organization is. I've found that no other group outside of the chamber really has a better working understanding of who KEDC is.
Any other questions? Is there a Connor? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Walt Kanig. If you don't mind, can we tailor it more toward the EIC budget than what we've been doing so far?
I'm prepared to make a statement on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. My name's Walt Kanig. I'm president and CEO of the Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce, seventeen hundred Sidney Baker Street, Kerrville, Texas. I would like to change gears a little bit to what we've been talking to thus far. And what I'd like to do, in light of a lot of discussions that's been going on in the community around this issue, is be very clear about what the chamber's position is with respect to economic development generally. And also, I'd like to have a little discussion around where we see the process needing to be to get to where we need to be with respect to economic development. First of all, I'd like to lay out five, you know, basic principles that we, as a chamber, are adhering to within the frame of economic development. As a chamber, with our nearly one thousand members, we anticipate fully on being involved in the definition and implementation of all aspects of economic development for our community, including structure, organization, process, strategy, and tactics. I think it's really natural for us to have this anticipation, given the fact that we represent all the businesses of Kerrville, large and small, and we have a unique insight into their needs, their desires, and their wants with respect to moving the community forward. Number two, we're committed to fully supporting the development and implementation of the new comprehensive plan for the city. And we believe that this planning process, as designed, will be transparent and inclusive. We believe that by including the community in this effort, a great product will result. And we plan to be very active partners in this process. We've already set ourselves up to contribute meaningfully to this process. And economic development clearly is one of our main priorities as a chamber. And we will reflect that in our participation in the comprehensive plan. Number three, we believe that the current structural communication issues that exist between the Economic Development Corporation, the Economic Investment Corporation, the city and the county can be addressed and greatly improved by the subcommittee of the three EDC and three EIC board members that were sanctioned and defined in the last joint meeting we had. We're fully supportive of that effort, and we want to see that succeed. We strongly disagree with and really can't support any efforts to circumvent the comprehensive planning process or the operation of the joint EDC/EIC Subcommittee. Provided the comprehensive plan in its final phase is transparently developed, inclusive, and reflective of the needs and wants of the business community, we will support the outcomes, wherever they go. We want to see the city become much more efficient with respect to how it handles economic development.
Excuse me, do you have a comment about the EIC budget?
I have a comment about-
George, has the time elapsed?
No, but we're supposed to stay on topic.
Well, let's give the man the time that we give the EIC.
I have no problem doing that, I just was asking the question.
Okay, I'll cut to the chase. We request- We request and fully support the funding, as requested, for the EDC through the EIC budgeting process as a Chamber of Commerce, and we appreciate the time to not only communicate our objectives as a Chamber of Commerce, but also to make that specific request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last speaker, I guess, Barbara Burton. There she goes. That's her right there.
Barbara Burton, 235 Guadalupe Street. Just want to give a little history on the 4B sales tax. I'm a graduate of Leadership Kerr County, class of '94, and served on the steering committee for the subsequent four years after that. During that time was the discussion process of bringing up the 4B sales tax. And I could tell you everything you want to know about the 4B sales tax. And when it was presented to the citizens of Kerrville to vote on this, it was presented on the ballot as infrastructure improvement. So it's very interesting to me, the last few years, all we've heard about is economic development and quality of life, as is reflected in the discussion here this evening. So I was really pleased to read in the newspaper this morning the mention of the infrastructure improvement, as well as Mr. Hoppy's comments earlier, that that was a huge part of why the citizens of Kerrville voted in this 4B sales tax was for the purposes of infrastructure improvement. So, you know, I'm happy to hear that we're talking about that a little bit. I know economic development's important, quality of life's important as well, but we certainly have a number of infrastructure improvements that needed to take place as well. So just wanted to bring that up as far as the history of the 4B sales taxes concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from council? Oh, sure.
Jack Prattigan, 105 Deerwood. Since I didn't use all my time and another topic under EIC has expanded, I want to address the reserves. The state's... The state of Texas Rainy Day Fund is a good example. Without that rainy day fund, with all the current catastrophic events that we're experiencing in our state, a tax increase would be looming. And proper funding of our reserves are essential to our economic stability in this community, and I fully support the full funding because you don't use reserve money for operations. You use it such as what we're having to do in the state of Texas right now after the hurricanes. You use it for unexpected events, and I can tell you through economic development that you have unexpected events that are going to arise because you don't know what that prospective business is going to demand from you.
Thank you. With all due respect, KEDC is the marketing arm of the economic development, and nobody's discussing the reserve of EIC, the true economic developer of this financial arm. Are there any more comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. It sounds like KEDC can't operate with 255,000, and I'd like to see them eat away at their reserves. I'm not real sure why they have the reserves. It sounds like it's just... I would like to see them eat away at that personally.
Sure.
Yeah, my name is Mike Sigerman. I live at 4,000 Comanche Trace Drive. Two questions. My first question is, when the KEDC was set up and the infrastructure and organization was set up, it was set up with the reserve? Was that... When it was set up with their funding, was there set up to be a reserve, or how did the reserve come about?
The reserve is just left under... Leftover, unspent funds.
Well, what Mr. O'Connor said was that its original purpose was to accumulate money to build a spec building.
No, no, no.
Now, they've decided that's not the way to go.
No, no, no. That's a new... He's asking about when it was set up. It was not set up with a reserve involved. They don't budget for a reserve.
But he asked where the reserve come from.
No, no, no. My question was, when the KEDC was originally organized and their budget was funded, was their... Part of their budget was a reserve fund?
No.
So the reserve fund has just come from their budget for $255,000 annually, and they have not spent it all, so it's just been...
Savings over time.
Carried over.
Correct. As an example, this past year, part of the built-up reserves is close to $30,000, having to do with us not having a director of KEDC last year for three pay periods. So that's being called savings, but you can see what it came from. It came from not having a director, so not being able to provide the services. But, in any case, that wasn't a targeted reserve amount. That was just a, oops, here it is.
Okay. So I understand that. Now, my second question is, is the recommended funding for KEDC is in the EIC budget, which was recommended by IAC to bring to City Council for approval? So EIC has recommended 100 and... Up to $180,000 for KEDC. That's what EIC recommended to you guys to approve or disapprove.
Absolutely.
Correct. And we're not actually asking to... I'm not even suggesting to change what they've already funded.
No, I'm...
Yeah, correct.
So EIC has recommended to the City Council to approve the $180,000 budget?
Yes.
Bottom line, that's what...
Correct.
And you guys are making a decision whether you agree with what the EIC has recommended to you to do as the experts?
No, as the...
We moved and seconded that.
As the authority of that fund, correct. Not experts. Nobody's an expert in any of this.
No, but EIC has recommended they are your arm looking at their budget, and they recommend to you guys, as EIC is the economic organization, they recommend to the City Council to approve the budget.
Correct.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make my last little comments, and then we'll move through with the motion that's on the floor. Basically, we've turned an EIC budget meeting into justification for kind of the process, but I guess it became more specifically about KEDC, which was not the intent. The intent was really just to discuss the budget in its current form and highlight the fact that we're not actually underfunding anybody if we stick to what EIC actually funded, which was 140,000. They did have it in their budget that they could go up to 180,000, but they actually guaranteed them 140,000 in a few weeks. That's really what they've decided to do. My... In keeping with the other duties that this council will have, I was looking at using the reserves in their payment, not in just EIC's. But the big reason that the whole discussion is going on is because there needs to be an evaluation of this process, as many people have pointed out. And I don't know if everybody realizes it or not, but in the last seven years of the... Or eight years, really, of the partnership of KEDC, EIC, and the city doing economic development in this community, we have spent... EIC is tasked with sales tax. They have brought in roughly $25 million over that time period of sales tax money, and they're tasked with administering that money. In that time period, the community as a whole has paid $2 million, a little over $2 million, to administer that amount of money. So the administration costs are about 10% based on what they're bringing in. What further goes into it, we keep calling it economic development. In that same time period, we have arguably done about $6 million, maybe a little bit less, of true economic development. The rest of it falls under other categories, quality of life, whatnot. And so basically, and of that $2 million, you're talking about some that are set aside. We haven't actually spent the money. We've just earmarked it. So, and the KEDC document that we were given touts the big three that we talk about all the time, James Avery, Fox Tank, and Mooney, being, you know, the big feathers in the cap. Keep in mind, KEDC is supposed to be bringing in and retaining, but bringing in economic development to this area. Those three big feathers in our cap could arguably have been done without anybody. They would have called the city and asked for help. And maybe not... I'm just saying. I said arguably. Bottom line is, all told, economic development is costing us $2 million to do, and we're putting out six... We're putting out below, but getting close to $6 million of investment. That seems like not such a good return on the investment in my mind. So what I'm getting at is, the whole system needs to be evaluated, and if it ends up being status quo, everybody decides we've evaluated and it's all good, then we're good. I don't understand everybody's fear of actually having the discussion, which is really all that we've done today. So, having said that, we have a motion on the floor to... In a second, to accept the budget as presented from EIC. All in favor, unless there's any more comments? Anybody have any comments?
I'd like to just say something.
Please do.
Sure, just brief. Economic development is a complicated issue. It is frustrating because it costs a lot of money, and you don't necessarily see a dollar-for-dollar feedback right away. But that doesn't mean you can quit doing it because every town wants the jobs that we want. Every town wants the businesses we want, and if we decide to just sit on the sidelines and see what happens, we can be sure the other towns will get the plums that we'd like to be competing for. So, yes, it is frustrating to have to spend that money and not see an immediate return, but there's a lot of things in this life that go like that, and your ultimate choice is whether you're going to compete. I think Kerrville's got to compete.
Which I think we've all seen.
And I think it's fine to... I'm not sure the current setup is the most perfect one, but I think we'll get to the most perfect one by deliberate, inclusive, all stakeholders at the table, long conversations, lots of analysis, not on spur of the moment.
Correct. With all due respect, nothing...
For tonight, I'm for passing this budget, and let's see what that committee does, and then let's see what the next step needs to be.
I appreciate that, and keep in mind that what has been discussed is not to cut anybody's funds.
Good.
So, we're actually not on a different page, and I actually am disappointed that everybody that comes up turns it into that me or anybody else is attempting to make it not...
Well, now, wait a minute, George.
No, you just said sit on the sideline.
Come on, you've said things like...
Okay, with all due respect, I didn't come here to stop the process. I came here to discuss the process.
But it isn't fair to act like you're surprised that people think you're in favor of getting rid of the EDC. You've said it.
I'm not talking about that, but that's okay. We'll go with the motion in a second, and we have... All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? It's 2-2. It's a tie, so the motion fails, which basically means the... Is there any other motions? To add direction to it, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we actually approve the budget... Well, we can't. We can't actually approve a budget with something in it, so it fails. Thank you. So we'll move on to the next topic. Next topic is a public hearing.
Could I stop you just a minute and ask a procedural question? What will happen? Will the budget come back to us when there are five people here?
Well, ultimately, it'll go back to EIC first, and they can decide to do nothing with it, but then it'll come back to us. So the next topic is, six-day public hearing on the ad valorem tax rate for tax year 2017, fiscal year 2018 for the city of Kerrville. I just... I guess at 7:04, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on the item?
So Sandra's got a few remarks.
Wow, I do it wrong every time, don't I? Sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Yarborough.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Pro Tem, and council. Two public hearings are required since we have a proposed tax rate that exceeds the effective tax rate, and this is a second public hearing of the proposed rate of 56.25, $100 for $100 valuation, which exceeds the effective tax rate of 55.14, $100 valuation. The public notice was published on the website, on the city website, beginning August 9th, published in the Weekend Edition of the Kerrville Daily Times, August 12th and 13th, and published in the Hill Country Community Journal on August 16th. The tax rate has two components. The maintenance and operations portion for the general operations for the city is .4890 per hundred value, and the interest and sinking fund is .0735 for the debt service. The proposed tax rate is the same rate as last year and has been the same rate for the past nine years. The proposed tax rate would increase the tax revenue over the last fiscal year by approximately $159,000 due to property appraisal value increases. The average homestead taxable value is $193,902, and they would see a tax increase of $21.52 at the proposed rate rather than the effective rate. The proposed additional revenue would help fund increased street maintenance by 20%, additional police and engineering department staffing, merit, and other wage adjustments. The estimated reserve fund balance would be 26.7% at the close of 2018, which exceeds the 25% minimum as adopted by City Council in the financial management policy, and staff recommends holding a public hearing.
So do I ask for council discussion, or I just open it? Okay, so here we go. 7:06, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak? Step to the podium, please. Yes? You come right up.
My name is Bill Tyler. I live in Comanche Trace. I am not a proponent of tax increase. However, if you drive around this city, you see infrastructure problems everywhere you look. You're talking about a same tax you've had for some long period of time. It's about time that somebody realizes you almost have a stagnant town, and you don't like to hear that, but you look at your infrastructure. Let's take your first responders. Your first responders need equipment, and I refer to the fire department. I don't know that much about them as I do the police department, but good air-breathing apparatus. The police department needs better armor protection. In addition to that, how many of these individuals can go on a combat course and hit the target three times out of 10? What I'm referring to is money. You need money to train. You need money to buy ammunition. Now, that's just one part of it. Deferred maintenance. I don't care how much you defer, kind of going back to what you alluded to at one time, it's going to cost you more in the long run. What I'm simply seeing is this. I don't think this city has ever had a strategic budget, and I'm talking about one that's basically should be 10 years, ought to just take five years, where you can program what you need. Holding your tax level like it is, and you say the town is growing, maybe it is, then how can you provide all the resources that you need if you hold a tax level and the town is growing? So I'm not a proponent of increase of tax, but you need to consider a tax increase, not a decrease.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Nope? And I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:09, and I'm expected to read this, I guess by law. This adoption... The adoption of proposed ad valorem tax rate will occur through separate reading of an ordinance. The first reading will occur on Tuesday, September 12th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m., followed by the second reading and adoption of the ordinance to occur on Tuesday, September 26th, 2017. Both readings and considerations of the ordinance will occur at City Hall, Council Chamber, 701 Main Street, Kerrville, Texas. And then I get to move on, yes? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2017-17, adopting the annual budget for the city of Kerrville, Texas, fiscal year 2018, providing appropriations for each city department and fund, containing a cumulative clause and containing a savings and severability clause. And so someone's presenting it, yes?
I'll do it from up here. Should have some slides that Martin will bring up in just a moment. So the last time we met, the council, this was during a public hearing on the budget itself, which is required once and now tax rate twice. The council asked that I bring back... I bring back some options to bring the tax rate down to the effective rate and describe what the impacts of those options would be. So, I have done that, and I want to review that with you today. Prior to going into that, I also want to mention too that we've had three work sessions. We've had a formal presentation of the budget itself. We've had two public hearings. And so, there's not been any amendments to date. And we've got today on first reading, and then your next meeting will be the final reading. And we would need to adopt a budget before the end of this month. So, that's our schedule, and we've had extensive public input. So, the council asked me again to look at what it would take to reduce to the effective rate. So, if we go to the effective rate of 55.14, that would reduce our revenue by $160,000 roughly. We, in addition to that, since the official proposed budget came out to you, we also had some additional amendments that we, we need to go ahead and take into consideration with new information that wasn't available at the time that it came out. So, the first of these is additional water cost at the sports complex because the potable water will still be used up for a significant portion of the next fiscal year, which is more expensive than the reuse water. So, we estimate that we'll need another $60,000 in that budget to cover the water expense. We also are pleased about the next item, although it will have a fiscal impact, working with the county, and I saw Commissioner Moser here earlier, to offer library services to Kerr County residents in exchange for Kerr County providing enhanced animal services to the city of Kerrville. So, but that impacts us in terms of revenue of about $21,000. And then also here just last week, we got notification that we have a grant that we received for some money, some equipment, excuse me, for our EMS that was programmed as an expense, but now we have a grant to cover it. So, the net of all those is in the order of $47,500 in addition to the impact of going to the effective rate. So, the, the total would be then $207,485. So, a few options. And before I go into these, I would just say that these are not options that I'm recommending. I would be sticking with my original proposal of the budget that I, that I made to you all, with the exception of trying to cover that, the last three items, which again amount to $47,500. In terms of action, the council has options to make amendments tonight, or you can wait on second reading to make those amendments as well. But certainly, you can have all the discussion you want about any of these options tonight. So, first option would be to go ahead and increase the sales tax projection to 4%. This is what we had already done in the proposed budget, but the last two months came in stronger. So, it means that the actual projection is now less than 4% if we leave the number where it, where it is today. So, if you take it up to the full 4%, you get an additional $50,000. You could also reduce your contingency, which is at a $250,000, which would give you $36,000. And then you could move your expenses for Playhouse 2000 from the general fund to the hotel occupancy tax fund. That includes a stipend of $50,000 plus utilities, and that amounts to $75,200. And then you could also push back the start date of the new positions, the evidence technician in the police department, and the project manager slash inspector in development services. So, that's one option. Option two, you could increase your street use fee. This is, in other cities, you might call this a franchise fee. For example, K-Pub pays the city a franchise fee of 3% of gross revenue. We now have it at 2%. That would give you an additional $122,655 if you go to the, the full 3%. This does however have an impact on the water utility side, which puts some pressure on your water rates. And then again, moving the Playhouse 2000 funding to the hot fund, and then increasing sales tax only to 3.4%, which is only $9,600. Option three, this would be to reduce merit raises for civilian employees from an average of 3% down to 2%. That gives you $63,000 roughly. Reduce the public safety cost of living adjustment from 2% to 1%. That's $73,000. Push back the start date of positions again, and then also increase your sales tax projection to 3.6%. So, again, total of 207. Option four would be to reduce your pavement management program back closer to what is in this year's budget. We are, we had, did enhance it by $250,000 in the budget proposal, but this would take it back down to 2, 1.3 million dollars. Option five would be to reduce your asset replacement transfer. This is for equipment replacement by and large. This just means that you're deferring the replacement of, of those items. So, whether it was the option four or five, those items are just made basically a one-year deal, and you've got to play catch-up. But they are options. So, again, these aren't options that I'm recommending. I just had been asked to bring back some options for your consideration. So, with that, Mayor Pro Tem, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
No, not really questions. I just, the moving from the Playhouse 2000 fund to the hotel occupancy tax fund, I thought was a pretty good idea. It seems like that might actually be where that belongs. Is there any, what's, what's the downside to that?
The downside is that right now, it's throwing off an additional roughly $100,000 a year, revenues to expenditures. And if the council were to come up with another project that you wanted to support, whether that's having to do with Arcadia or the Shell Haze House or some other project, and you wanted to use that rev, it wouldn't be there. And so, it just kind of precludes a future decision from being considered.
Opportunity cost. And what about this heads-and-beds documentation?
They would be required to document their visitors so that they would be eligible for the hotel tax. And I don't think they're going to have, they would have an issue with that component, but they would have to document where their ticket sales were coming from and that sort of thing.
Do we have any idea where that is right now? What proportion of the customers of the Calo Theatre on an annual basis live out far enough away that they would have to stay in a motel?
It's going to change from year to year, depending upon what, what they're offering in terms of the performances and with their partners. This would be a fairly small component to their overall budget. I don't think it would be a hurdle. The bigger concern I would have is that it's, as you mentioned, the opportunity cost.
Right.
You got another question?
The, I have one more, George. The, most of the options list a fund balance drawdown of $750,000. My guess is that's what we were going to say for the new fire truck.
That's correct. That was in.
And that would have to go.
That was in the current year. And then some of these options, the other, the other thing that you asked me to do is demonstrate what the five-year impact might be of these scenarios. And so, a few, three of them indicate going into the red by fiscal year 19. Two of them do not because you're taking cost permanently out of your budget, or you're putting in a new revenue source permanently in your budget. But you do have that information as well.
Anymore?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I have a couple. One, the, the streets one, the, you know, the drainage trade for streets, does, it's $122,000 is what you're suggesting in the plan you suggested. But, and I realize it would impact the water fund. How much is it really, is $120,000 going to really affect the rates?
We're pretty tight now because this year, we're avoiding a rate increase. With the TTHM and some other expenses coming onboard and not having yet restructured our debt, this would just add to the situation. So, we already, we're looking at 6% increase on water for fiscal year 19, not next year, but the following year, and 2% on sewer. So, this just puts a little more pressure on that.
Okay. But to be clear, the most of that is driven by the debt that we're carrying already in water, correct?
It's a little, it's, it's, a lot of it is, yes.
So, that aside, and we've, you and I had talked, well, there's two things. One, the contingency. Have we had a contingency in the city before this year? Did they use the budget one?
Yes.
Okay. What was the, what was the amount they used to budget?
$150,000.
Okay. So, we've increased that one.
By $100,000.
Okay. And typically, did we, because I know we would get, we generally would get a surplus out of the budget every year. Did, did we actually dip into that contingency normally? Is that historically what would happen?
Yes. Yes. This year, it's almost all spent for just things that were unexpected. The $150,000 that was for a rent.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Okay. And then the other one that we, you and I had talked about, which was the, the, I think in all of your projections, basically, we're, we have a, is it a policy of the target reserve 25%?
Yes.
Is that correct? And we're, when you play all these patterns out, the reserve stays above 25%. Is there a reason to do that? I mean, I understand the, you know, just-in-case stuff, but that's what 25% is, right?
Right. And so, these are projections.
Correct.
You don't know really until the end of the fiscal year. The, the approach, if you wanted to program your surplus over and above your target, then you'd want to be spending those for non-recurring expenses, one-time expenses, because you don't know if that money's going to be there next year. So, you know, one option you might have is to create a pay-as-you-go capital projects fund, where you would move certain capital items that are one-time in nature, but not build a budget on it. So, there's, it's not a significant portion, and it's going to vary from year to year. And you don't really know for sure what that audit number, or that number is until after the audit. Just like this year, you all didn't transfer that $750,000 until after the audit came out. And so, that would be an option to set that up. There are some things in your current year budget that are one-time in nature. There always are. You know, for example, the $75,000 incremental funding for the, the comprehensive plan. So, but that way, you're programming it in a logical way through a budget process.
Okay. So, if, if, just piecing them all together, I know it's a projection. I, I get that. But we're looking at roughly $500,000, $400,000 of surplus, I say surplus, above the target of 25% right now, right?
As a projection, right.
On, excuse me, on a budget of 80 some odd million, right?
Total budgets for operating and capital is 66.
66.
But general fund is 50. I mean, well, yeah.
Right. And so, I mean, I, I assume your point being that, you know, that's, that's a small number.
Yeah, it's, it's a small number.
Correct. Historically, I say historically, the last few years at least, it's actually been an underestimate. We've actually been having, and, and I get that it'll be tight. I mean, it can be tight. But piecing together the different options, as you guys were discussing before, the, the Playhouse 2000, whether it's an opportunity cost or not, it does seem to belong in the hot tax fund, being an arts venue. That's $75,000. And you just mentioned the comprehensive plan as being possibly a one-time fee that might work in. That gets you to 150. I'm thinking there might be another one-time fee or something out there that's the other whatever, 70,000 or 60,000 that we're looking at as a way to get, again, it's a small thing. It's also still leaving, I'm only talking about touching that reserve of, again, keep in mind, it's above the 25 target, but that reserve, we're only talking about taking, what, 100, 150 out of it, 1,000 maybe? That's the consideration. I'm not suggesting someone has to do it. I'm just, that's, that gets us to the effective rate, which I for one like the idea of going at the effective rate. And that's just me. But any other questions?
Well, I, I for one like going with the proposal that they had prepared because I believe that it's the wisest thing to do. I, I am somewhat worried if we would reduce it some, that, you know, you're going to take a penny out this year and pay two cents back next year. If we have to come along in, you know, March or April or sometime May, and we realize that we've got to do something, something has happened, and we got no money to, to be flexible with in any regard if we take it out now. So, I'm in favor of leaving the budget as it was proposed at our last budget discussion. Okay? I mean, that's okay.
It seems like to me, all the options require some risky predictions.
Yeah.
Or some, you know, even, even though individually they're small, they, they end up presuming that sales tax is going to be higher, or, you know, it's just, what we've got now is a budget that balances, that's conservative, and that shows some growth, that takes advantage of the fact that the city's economy is growing. Every month, we hear from Sandra, new houses, new, new building permits. That's the beauty of the property tax. It's supposed to go up as the town expands. That way, there's enough money to cover expanded services. That's, I don't know why we want to mess with that, especially when we think that the savings per household is $21.50. Now, that, and that's the median average. That's, you know, that's add them all up and divide by the number of units. If you look at the median average, which is how many people are above that and the same number below, the 50th percentile, it's lower. So, it's going to be less than $20. And if you think of the people who need money the worst in our town, they are probably renters. Does anybody think that landlords are going to lower the rent because their taxes went down? No. So, it just seems like the cost benefit here is not there. The, the cost of taking risks with our future or slowing down our progress for a very little benefit.
I'd go back just one minute to, to the Calo Theatre and the hot tax. I, I would think that we should leave it where it is this year and do an investigation to see if it legitimately qualifies by, by, do they have enough out-of-town folks coming to the theatre over the, over a year's time? And go do that work and look and see, and be prepared. If, if they do, then we could always decide in the middle of the year to make a change on that one, if we knew that that was the intelligent thing to do financially. Because if you move them over there, I don't think you can just move them back. It will. I don't, I'm not sure about that, but.
I believe they do qualify. I'm on the Playhouse 2000 board. In the few meetings I have been to, a lot of their customers, a lot, they're from out of town. They draw on.
Is it far enough out of town that they have to?
We're currently working on those statistics. And the, the codes are over 50% from out of town, but not stay there.
Yeah. No. They, they just drive. They just drive in for the performance.
I can tell you about the details of the symphony. If you want to go look at how many people from out of town come into town to go to the symphony. And they don't stay, you know, and they don't, probably don't eat, most of them don't eat dinner. They come to go to the symphony, and then they go back home. And so, that's why I'm saying I think we ought to do some work on it. If it, if it were to be the case that they qualified, then I'd be in favor of doing it. But right now, I'm, I don't see the rationale. It's not clear to me that it's justifiable. And so.
Okay. Let me, let me just say one more thing, and we'll move on. Just to be clear, we're not talking about a tax cut. We're talking about a status quo tax. So, when you talk about $21, it's not a matter of putting $21 back in their pockets. It's a matter of not having the government put their hand in for the extra 21.
Exactly.
So.
The homeowner would have $21 more with your plan than the one I said.
Correct. But they'd have the exact same.
For the whole year.
They'd have the exact same amount they had last year if we went with the effective tax rate. That's actually what's going on.
But would they have exactly the same amount of services? I'm doubting it.
It's not really, oh, from the city?
Mm-hmm.
I, I believe that's what we're talking about. When we're talking about a reserve, we're not talking about a service as being given up. Now.
No, but we're talking about a risk that it won't all balance.
I understand. But just so we're clear, we're not actually talking about it. I'm not suggesting a tax cut. I'm suggesting a tax status quo that isn't cutting a single service, which I believe we've just demonstrated, and we can go with the motion from there. I'll accept motions.
Okay. I move that we approve the budget as submitted.
Is this the one that has to be said a certain way? Does she have to say the motion a certain way? Okay, so. Okay, so. Yeah, the, on the, it's.
What page are we going to?
It's that, as long as you can read it from there.
Mark, what will happen at the next meeting?
Recommended actions of the item, I think that was it.
Was that it?
I think.
Oh, recommended. First, I approve, I move to approve ordinance 2017-17 to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year 2018 on first reading.
Let me need a second.
Second.
And then, we do a record vote?
Can I ask Mark this question first?
Oh, sure we can. That would be the proper way to do it, right? Forgive me. I, yeah, we can do discussions, it's not a public hearing, no, but, come on up.
First of all, a rollback in the tax rate will negatively affect our financial well-being, and possibly even our bond rating, which will increase the cost of doing business. If our revenues remain the same, then we would be taking a step backwards rather than moving forward, maintaining a highly viable economy. Approximately 70%, and I'm just estimating here, approximately 70% of our budget is directly related to personnel costs. Do you intend on freezing their pay? And reducing the, when you reduce the tax rate? Or are you proposing to reduce the spending of services? Or, that are rendered to our citizens, or are you proposing both? The cost of operating machinery doesn't decrease, rather it increases. So it is with materials, so it is with goods. Therefore, a rollback is not sustainable, and then we'll have to raise the rate to catch up, as some of you have indicated on council. And this is not a prudent decision. A significant portion of our citizens live on a fixed income, and their standard of living is based on available discretionary income. Thus establishing a new strict, new standard for their own personal budgets. And they can't meet the monthly bills with a future tax increase, because they've established a standard of living based on that extra discretionary income, even if it's only $21. Prudent planning doesn't place seesaw with people's lives for a few votes. We have done very well over the past nine years by not increasing taxes. The city is currently investing our tax dollars in things we need. For example, improved streets, beautification, improved parks, possibly a new fire truck, as we have done in the past, and then competitive pay for our employees, et cetera. One thing that I am disappointed in is I have not seen anything in the budget relating to drugs. Drugs are a serious problem in our community, and a concern of mine. Not only in the city, but also throughout the county. We need more funds going into fighting this epidemic for the safety of our youth. And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, real, real quick though, thank you. Oh, go ahead and step up, because I can't hear it in there.
Considering the budget, and this is maybe a question from Mark. Mark? Mike Seegerman, 4,000, Comanche, Rayshire. At the previous city council meeting, when Mark proposed this budget for the city to be approved, and then the request was made for him to give options based on the effective rate. My question for you, Mark, is, you presented five options that would save money, but you did not recommend any of them. Your recommendation for the city budget is the one that you submitted at the last council meeting, not, not going with the effective rate, but going with the same rate. Am I correct?
That's correct, there are going to have to be a few cleanup items, the last three, that will have to be taken into account before they adopt the final budget, but in essence, yes.
Okay, so, so the question before the city council is, you have the city manager who's prepared and submitted his recommended budget, his recommended tax rate for the citizens of Kerrville. And really, my, my bottom line opinion is that's, that's the question. You have the, you have the man that runs, that runs the city, manages the city, it's recommended a budget, and really the discussion we're talking about is so miniscule in dollars. And I understand the concept about trying to, I don't know, effectively save the citizens some dollars, but again, we have the city manager who has recommended the budget that he, he believes is right for the city. And that's really the question, whether you guys have confidence in the city manager to approve the budget or not, anyway, that's my, that's my opinion.
Kenneth Early, 2756 Indian Wells Drive. You didn't approve the EIC budget? And the EIC budget has to be part of this budget? So my question is, can you approve this budget if you don't have all your components of the budget in, approved?
Actually, what's happened is, there are two separate items now. Originally, they were two, they were one consolidated budget, but the EIC was pulled out, because in years past it was done that way, so I was asked to pull it out. So it's, it's now, it was a separate item. So this item is only on all the other funds that are not EIC.
So, we have two dissenting votes, basically, or, or problems with both of the proposals that were made by committees that were approved by city council. So, I second Mr. Seegerman's issue that you guys have an issue with, with following the procedures that are laid out for you. You've got people that you've appointed to boards that you're not listening to.
Anything else?
I'd just like to repeat, George, just for clarity, that every one of these options cuts out the money we're saving for the fire truck. That is, that is a serious reduction in services. That means that the whole cost of a new fire truck is kicked down the can, kicked down, kicked on down the highway.
I'm sorry, you'll have to, you'll have to explain that one to me.
Look at all the options, all, option one, option two, option three.
Link into the fire truck, that's all I really wonder.
Is the, the first thing that goes is this fund balance is drawn down by $750,000. That drawdown is the money that we were going to put toward a new fire truck. And it'll take two years to accumulate it.
But we're not drawing down 750,000, we're, we're effectively drawing down 160. I'm not sure where I get the equation to 750.
All right, here. And if you track it on, it's on all the other ones too. That's got to go in order to bring down the tax rate to the effective rate.
Explain that to me, because I'm not sure I'm following that.
Well, so the 750,000 that you authorized as a council, or perhaps it was the prior council, in the current fiscal year, was a surplus from last year, and that's the 750,000.
That happened like last January.
So that falls to the fund balance, and becomes part of that over the 25%.
So, the 750 is the reason it's over, is that what you're saying?
I, I believe that's what she said.
The 750 was, after we got the audit, we, we saw that our 25% limit.
With all due respect, let me go ahead and keep asking him. So, the, the surplus in, the, over the 25% is the 750?
No. So, the 750 is basically transferred to the asset replacement fund, is that correct? Yeah. And I, I guess the, the argument is, and I'm not going to speak for Councilwoman Summerlin, but, is that it's because of the surplus that we count on over and above the 7, the 25% that we're able to do, you know, things like purchases of fire trucks that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise.
But, and maybe this is, is this a question from Ms. Yarborough? Basically, I mean, so what I'm asking is, then, the, if we don't touch any of these other things, well, we're only going after the, the 500,000 that's projected over the 25%. That reserve, whatever you want to call it, is that going to be there? And still do, I mean, have we already transferred the truck? We haven't, right, or we have? Okay, so if it's already in there, has it not already been accounted for causing, or, or leaving us still with the 500,000 over the 25%?
The, the 750 has already been accounted for, it's in a separate fund.
Okay, so, the, to, so then what I'm being asked isn't exactly right then, right? If I'm, if I'm touching the 26.1, or whatever that is, the percentage over the, the target, that reserve, that's not the fire truck money, is that correct?
Not that fire truck, you know, there's 750,000 each.
Okay, but, but the point is, it's, it's not targeting anything right now. And it still, it still won't, because it's going to come out of something, something other than that.
But the difference is that the $500,000 is projected for next year to be in excess. The $750,000 is in our bank.
I, I get that.
We know that.
I, I know, I understand that. I mean, the whole budget's a projection, so.
Right.
When it gets down to it, you know, we talk about the experts, the experts are presenting us this with a projected budget of what it is, and there's this, this overage. I'm, I'm expecting that they are actually doing it correctly. I'm trusting them. You know? So, but anyways, we, we've got a motion, we, did we get a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mark, what happens next meeting? I tried to ask that earlier.
Sure, so you'll have, basically go through this exact same exercise with the, the ordinance on the budget, and then the tax rate. So, just like it reads here, identical, and there'll be a second vote. So, our charter requires two readings of every ordinance, and then we have state truth and taxation laws that overlay our requirements for the budget process. So there'd be an opportunity for amendments again at that next meeting.
So it can be changed from here to that, here to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're, we're up to the, the vote again, right, correct? The record, record vote?
Mayor Protem Barudy.
I guess I, the question is to approve, so I guess I vote no.
Councilmember vocal?
No.
Councilmember Summerlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
The motion is two to two.
Which I guess the motion fails on first reading, and it will be, is there something I have to read after this too? No. So it will be coming up for a second reading at the next meeting. Correct? Not really, I mean, what do you, what do you have?
My question is, if it failed on the first reading, can you, do you have a second reading?
Yes, we do. We've already asked that question. I mean, correct, you do.
Do we go ahead and make the second motion?
I, I think you should, because if you do find that you voted for it, then this will cover you. So, this is state law.
I move that we, I move ratification to, of a, I move that we adopt the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous fiscal year.
Second. So now we need another record vote, okay.
Mayor White is absent, Mayor Protem Barudy.
Vote no, I guess this is right.
Councilmember vocal?
No.
Councilmember Summerlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Two to two.
Okay, so it fails on first reading, it will come up as a second reading, and to, just to clarify, this isn't a, a no on the budget, this is basically a no on, the intent is to continue to look at it in the next two weeks. Moving on to the next agenda item, 7B. Ordinance number 2017-18, levying an ad valorem tax for the use and the support of the municipal government for the city of Kerrville, Texas, for the fiscal year 2018, providing for apportioning each levy for specific purposes, and providing when taxes shall become due, and when same shall become delinquent if not paid. Does someone present?
There's no presentation on this, it's, you'll just need to actually take a vote, because it requires a reading and a vote on both, both items this time and next time.
I move that ordinance number 2017-18 be adopted, and that the property tax rate is increased by an adoption, by the adoption of a tax rate of .5625, which is effectively a 2.013% increase in the tax rate.
Second. We have a, we have a motion and a second, and we need a record vote?
Mayor White is absent, Mayor Protem Barudy.
No on the proposed rate.
Councilmember vocal?
No.
Councilmember Summerlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Motion is two to two.
So the motion fails on first reading, and it, it also will come back at the next meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
There we go. So, moving on to the next agenda item, 8A, termination of the disaster declaration as previously issued by the mayor and extended by city council. Did anybody?
Mr. Hayes.
You present this?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I was looking down, making some notes. Okay, so you recall the mayor pursuant to state law issued a declaration pursuant to the landfall and impact of Hurricane Harvey. She did that on August 25th this year. Five days later, the full council authorized an extension of that declaration, or, or council did at the time, authorized the continuation of that declaration. And now, based upon the facts involved, and you can hear from the fire chief as well, staff is recommending that you end that disaster declaration pursuant to state law. And by, by making a motion and adopting this declaration, that'll do that.
Okay, any comments or questions? No, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we terminate declaration of disaster.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes forward to nothing.
We can do it.
Thanks for your support. Moving on to the next agenda item, 8B, professional services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. for development of the new comprehensive plan in the amount of $369,715.
Yes, Mayor and Council, at your last meeting, you authorized me to go ahead and negotiate with Kimley Horn on professional services to help develop the comprehensive plan. We have done that now, we're bringing that back to you for consideration. In your pack, it was a copy of the contract, an extensive scope of services, detailed budget, and also a detailed timeline. The budget for this project was 375,000. We negotiated it, the price down to 369,715. There are 14 tasks involved in this effort that would take place over roughly a 12-month period, as well as 40 subtasks, so it's quite extensive. And we've already begun the groundwork, and we have additional groundwork scheduled for many of you this week in meeting with the consultants. We do have Mark Bowers representing Kimley Horn here for any questions that you might have tonight, but we would recommend that you go ahead and approve this agreement so that we can move forward.
Do you have any questions from council? No? Any questions from the public? No, then I guess I would entertain a motion to, are we asking you to enter into the agreement? Is that what we're doing?
You're authorizing the execution of the agreement.
There you go. I'll entertain, so.
A second.
A second, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passes forward to nothing. So, moving on to the next agenda item, 8C, revisions to applications for boards and commissions. I guess this is Councilmembers Summerlin and Ferguson. I guess, go ahead and either one of you.
Yeah, we, we've been working through this to have a half generic and a half specific to the, to the appointment board, and And after several runs at it and reruns, we've come up with a one sheet, as you can see in, in your book, and that is general. And then there's another sheet of paper which allows a front and back, so that you get specific responses to, that relate to a specific board or commission. And we would move approval of these forms and initiate using them as soon as the secretary's office can make that happen.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? I, I just wondered, what was the, what was the benefit to having the two forms instead of a generic one form? That if you
If you just had a generic one form, you couldn't ask specific questions in, in a manner that would cause people to respond. And there's, there's some answers you have to write. You can't just write your name and then put a big zip through it like has been going on. So if you don't legitimately and fill out the application appropriately, you won't get considered. Because we, if you go back and look through the applications, there are some who just wrote their name and threw it in the pile. And that's what we wanted to eliminate, that is, having to handle those doesn't make sense, it's a waste of time.
Okay. All right.
We took out some things that seemed to be redundant or
Yeah, yeah.
ma, made it a little clearer what we're really asking.
Does it, I guess, just logistically, does it mean that, because in currently, and as my, she, Ms. Craig, she can explain this, or answer this, I guess, but when we have, um, say I apply for a board and I don't get put on that board, we could keep the file on
For six
Yes.
Seeing this way, we, we've got the pertinent information.
Okay, but is it keeping them on, is it still keeping them on file? If I applied for planning and zoning, does it still keep me on file as a possible for these other ones? Or I come in and fill out a new specific?
Sure, sure. Well, you, you'd have to fill out a new specific one, but your basic stuff is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, your basic data stays there as long, you know, the appropriate time.
Which you always could do if you did it online, it lets you do it when you do it on paper, too.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. No? Okay. So I guess we've got a motion and a second, and all in favor, raise your right hand. It passes four to nothing, so I guess we're implementing these new forms effective immediately, correct?
As soon as she can get it in, yes. And I believe they're prepared to initiate it right straight away.
Okay.
Probably a day or two.
Yeah, well.
The next item on the agenda is 8D, a non-exclusive license agreement between the city of Kerrville and Hill Country Youth Soccer Association for use of the Kerrville Sports Complex.
Yes, sir. Before you tonight on 8D and 8E, we've got two non-exclusive license agreements for the two soccer organizations in town, the Hill Country Youth Soccer Association and the Hill Country Crush Soccer Academy. Uh, the, both of these agreements are virtually identical. There are some slight differences based off of the dates of their season, but essentially, they are the same agreement for, for both organizations. These were heavily modeled after the existing agreements that we have for the facilities that they utilize in a non-exclusive license agreement for the fields at Landfill Road. Obviously, this location changed and it's a significant, significant upgrade, but essentially, a very, very similar arrangement. There is a pricing difference essentially for the season, in-season months, that they're heavily utilizing those fields is $1,000 per month, which has been discussed over a number of years, was contemplated in this year's budget. For the non-season months, essentially, they're only charged if they're utilized, and that is at half the rate because we anticipate that they will really probably only be one or two weekends on those. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any question? I, I just have the one on the, I assume it's both in the same, but so the non, non-season rates, is that something we're collecting upfront in the beginning of the year, or they, as the month comes up, that they want to use it that month?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah, it would be, and it, you know, we'd, we'd work with them if it was because of rain delays or other issues, you know, we'll, we'll work through that.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, anybody? Nope?
I just had a comment. Uh, I just want to say, I'm glad we're able to save the old soccer fields to have our kids a place to play this, this fall. Without that, I don't think we would've been playing on soccer fields.
Yes, sir, and we do have, both organizations have expressed an interest in at least utilizing those in some type of practice manner in the future. So we're going to work with them on revising the, the current month-to-month agreements and getting those all squared away. You'll, you'll probably see that on upcoming agenda here the next few months.
Okay. So without any more questions, any questions from the public? No? I will entertain a motion, I guess.
So moved.
So moved, a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda is 8E, non-exclusive license agreement between the city of Kerrville and Hill Country Crush Soccer Academy, Inc. for use of the Kerrville Sports Complex.
Nothing new to present unless you have any question for me specific to that contract.
It looked like to me, excuse me, George, uh, EA, that, that the Crush League intended to have some weekday practices.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. They, they do intend to utilize that more during the weekdays than the other organization. However, they will be utilizing some of the old fields for some agility practices and, and some other matters there.
Okay. I don't, yeah. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four to zero. For those of you in the audience, the agenda item 8F was pulled from the agenda. I don't know, I assume it was still printed. But that was pulled by the submitter, so it may come up at another time, but it's not for tonight. So the next item, is it, is there is it a city manager's report?
Yes.
Okay.
So just briefly, you met Stuart Cunias earlier, and he's done a fantastic job for us in the short time that he has been with us. I think we're very fortunate to have him as a member of our community for several years, coming in and really hitting the ground running. Then the other thing that is coming around is the monthly capital projects report. Just a few items to point out. First of all, the Legion Lift Station in Forest Main, I know this is a, a big topic with both EIC and the council. The engineering will be done on that in the spring. So we would anticipate that when a EIC budget is approved, that we would be back to EIC and you all with an application, starting here first with the estimate of probable cost and moving that application along. Also, the reuse distribution mains, we're still on a target to have those operational in January. So that's not too far from today in the scheme of things. And then finally, the reuse pond and pump station, the spring of 2018 as well. So all that is, is coming together nicely now. You may start seeing some additional construction with regard to the, the pump assembly here in the next few days. And I'd be happy to take any questions, or you can ask me later if you'd like.
Anybody have any questions? No? Okay. We'll just move on to the next item. The next item is 10A, Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals Appointments. I guess.
We have four regular member terms and one alternate member term that expired August 31st this year. I have three applications on file with qualifications specific to the following positions. Regular members, architect, professional engineer, and active construction industry. These applicants were contacted and have agreed to serve on the building board, and those applications were provided to the council in your packet. The terms, if appointed, will expire August 31st, 2019. If these three applicants are appointed, there are still two additional positions open, the contractor and the alternate positions. And staff will continue to accept applications for those positions. The interview team consisted of council members Barudy and Vocal, and they have requested the appointment beyond this agenda.
Make any, you want to make any comments?
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
The, the current members, many of them were appointed the same day, October 25th, 2016. But their terms expire in different years. How did that happen?
The board was reconstituted. We had plumbing board, electrical, mechanical. We reconstituted it into one board, building board. And at that time, the terms were staggered so that they wouldn't all expire the same year.
Random draw or something. But did you say that everybody who's appointed tonight?
Tonight would expire August 31st, 2019 because they're two-year terms.
Okay.
Did you, were you able to make contact with anybody?
No, I did not, not on this, not on this board.
Okay, because I wasn't either. I, um, I don't have a, all three of them were on it, we don't have other applicants. I don't have a, a problem with having them re-up, my own cell.
I think that's exactly what we ought to do. We expect good people that are serving faithfully, of course.
We don't have any, we don't have another to choose from anyway, so I would make a, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Michael Walker, Bruce Matherall, and Art Leonard to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
And I'll second. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four to nothing. So we still have one full member and an alternate left on that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And they have expressed, the current ones serving have expressed an interest, but they have not filled out the application.
Okay.
When will they need that in before it's next?
You may, you can guess that one.
Okay. Moving on to the next item is 10B, Recovery Community Coalition Appointments.
The requirement for the three positions that are currently vacant are, position one, owner of a male boarding home facility with valid permit issued by the city. That term is due to expire December 31st, 2018. Uh, position five is a representative of mental health support organization such as the Kerrville State Hospital. That term is due to expire December 31st, 2019. Position number eight is a representative from a residential addiction treatment facility located within Kerr County. Term is to expire December 31st, 2019. Council has been provided applications from persons who meet the qualifications for the open positions, and those applicants have been contacted and confirmed that they would like to be appointed. The interview team were council members Vincent Vocal and Mary Ellen Summerlin, and they requested the appointment be placed on this agenda.
Were you able to contact all of them, Mary Ellen?
I wasn't really.
I did, I did contact all of them, and they, I, I believe they meet all the requirements, and they seem very energetic and ready to serve. And I told them, we're kind of looking for that on this board right now because we're going in a new direction.
Right, right.
And I will point out that all three had actually applied, I guess, back in, when the commission was first formed.
Oh, good, good. So that shows some real dedication.
So, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. It passes four to zero. So that gets us down to, anybody have any comments about future agenda items?
Mayor Protem, for the record, I think we should state those names.
Oh, okay. So we have being approved in position, I guess we'll call it one.
Position one.
Is Cody Liked.
Okay.
And position five is Dana Cardwell. And position eight is Carol McCarrick. McCarrick? Okay.
Thank you.
And so, any future agenda items from anybody? No? Uh, we don't need any executive session at any, right? So I guess we're done, yes? All right. Uh, at 8:05, we adjourn the meeting.